Okay, so we've called the meeting to order at 5:30. We welcome the visitors and we serve a pledge of allegiance. Now I'll entertain a motion regarding the approval of tonight's agenda. I'll move to approve tonight's agenda submitted.
Sir.
Hearing the motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We now need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206-1B.
I'll move to move into executive session for Idaho Code 74-206-1B.
A second. Hearing the motion and a second, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Griston?
Yes.
Trustee B?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we are going into executive session. I need to ask all of you to leave and we'll open the meeting back up as soon as we're done with executive session. If you are part of the executive session, you remain in the room. Yeah, if you're part of the executive session, you go ahead and remain in the room. Okay. We've come out of executive session. We will, we have no post-executive action items. For announcements, again, I just want to reiterate that this is, that these board meetings are business meetings and they're held in public, they're not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, and follows our district policies and the Idaho administrative code. Time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It's not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversations take place. That being said, I don't believe we have any public input. There was nothing on the little roster. We'll move on into the long-range planning committee reports.
Okay. So we had our second meeting on Monday this week.
Okay.
It was, we had a full agenda, really, really good conversation. Brian was not here. He was cavanting off to a Seattle Seahawks game. So, I guess the one thing I really wanted to share with the board is because Brian wasn't there and I needed to be able to share information with people who don't really understand public school funding in a way that was easily digestible, I asked Brian to help me. And so he put this together for me. And basically, this document just shows general funding expenditures, what we get from the state in salary-based apportionment or state discretionary money, what we actually spend, and what the gap is basically, what the supplemental levy is covering for that. And then, one of the suggestions from the committee yesterday was it would be really helpful if we could see just by each line item, how many certified people is that? And so, we took the median salary and divided that into this dollar amount to get the 19.
Okay.
And then, you can see significant number of classified staff, administrators, and then our school safety. So we brought, this was, they really appreciated looking at it in this way. It helped tell the story of, because we talked to them about the state funds us for about 75% of what it costs us to run our district with the programs we have in place right now.
Right.
What does that actually mean? And so they, this was something that they were able to look at and understand.
Okay.
So, yes, sir?
Board, and just so you, when I had the numbers, we don't code, just so you know, the difference between like state discretionary and the levy. So, when I said that, for example, the expenditures in the supplemental levy covered 1.1 of certified staff, I guess we, I could have said, no, state discretionary covers another 1 million and then I had another category of maybe mandatory benefits or something else not cover it. Does that make sense? In other words, and that's why I think it's important is that I, we could say that at, you know, we have state discretionary covered 300,000 and the supplemental covered 900. I could say state discretionary covered 1.2, but then this is 900,000 more here. Does that make sense? Because I don't, I'm not quoting separately, but...
I know that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I was, but definitely, when we're taking a look at our revenues and what are our expenditures there and what the state revenues are for there, there's, that's how we were able to make that number.
Okay.
And then you distributed the state discretionary money?
Yeah, the state discretionary, like you see at the medical benefits, it, 50% of state discretionary goes to medical and that is covering all our medical costs. So I did definitely put that there, because that's the intent of that. And then after, you know, discretionary, once, you know, as it is now, 50% of state discretionary goes to medical, if there's anything left over, it's discretionary. And so then, we sort of distribute it just in some of the other areas.
Okay.
Flip back to that for a second.
Sure.
What you have listed there as discretionary funds are actual discretionary funds? They're not estimated or anything about that?
Correct. So that, that 8.85 million in total?
That actually flows?
That actually flows between the, so this was our actual transportation funding.
Yeah, that's what...
Correct. Yeah, so that's a combination between technology, the 352 from the state, transportation, and then discretionary is really the balance. Yeah, the gap does tie up.
So, one of, we gave a lot of information, there was a lot of really good conversation. The committee felt like that I could work with Brian to make this maybe even a little bit more user-friendly, but that we put that out to the community so they can see kind of the big picture and have an understanding of why we're talking about a supplemental levy. And so that's my ideas about what that could look like. And then, at the end, we talked about our levy rate and Brian provided this document for us. And I did not do as good a job speaking to this as I did the first one, because this is definitely Brian's area of expertise. But what they could see was our levy rate is going down.
Right.
And, and so, that was kind of what they were focused on. So the, at the end, we, there were three tables set up and we had about eight to 10 people at each table. And so I just asked them at their tables to kind of talk about with just their first blush with this information, what do you think? And we talked about the long-range or the plant facility levy and the supplemental levy. So, interestingly, the first table said, we think we should just run the supplemental levy and put the plant facility levy off another year. The second table said, we think we should take the plant facility levy dollars and put it into the supplemental and just run one, knowing that Brian would then pull out what is dedicated for plant facility out of that supplemental, which would put it at, I think they said 10,750. And then the last table said, we think we should run the supplemental for what it was and the plant facility for what it was, side by side, and let the patrons be very clear about what they're approving. And so, that's where we will start the next time we meet, which is on September 26th. Okay, these are the three brainstorms, let's massage them so that we can get to the point. Our goal is to have a recommendation to the board by the November board meeting so that you have opportunity to discuss. And then, it would come back to, at December for an approval vote, because then if the board approves it, the resolution language, the ballot language has to be approved in January.
Okay, and this is for the March?
And everybody was unanimous in thinking that March was the best time to run it, simply because if, if something, if it didn't go the way we wanted it to go, then we had May still before we had to do anything drastic.
Okay.
Any questions about, we're just focusing right now on the supplemental and plant facility levy and we're not talking anything long-range. If a board member wants to attend, we would love to have you.
I'll go to the next one.
Okay.
Thank you.
That would actually be helpful since you have some knowledge of finance.
I apologize for not being at the last meeting. Higher duty called.
That's okay.
Okay. No further questions? Did you share that spreadsheet with us that you had with all the figures on it? Or was that, okay?
It's linked in, it's linked into that agenda.
Yeah, I didn't see it in there at all. Oops. Okay, I can find it.
Okay, it is linked.
Okay, it's the first type of link. You open the agenda and then on the agenda, it's, it's in there. All right, moving on to the financial report. Did anyone have any questions, comments, discussions on the financial? Just want to say, it doesn't look like we had a significant increase in student population. That's awesome.
Really?
I mean, not, I want us to grow, but at the pace we can handle.
Right, we need to get the long-range plan in place before we start to see that. That would be great. Lakeland High School is significantly up. There are over 900 kids right now. And then, several of our other schools are, went down. So, it's just a weird, but when we looked at the enrollment last Wednesday, we had exactly the same number of kids last Wednesday as we had on the last day of school.
Wow.
But 25% of our kids are new, so we just...
We made it wash.
We did.
That's cool.
So, all of those homes that are going in are not necessarily, I think, maybe because the cost is so high that families with little kids maybe can't afford those, but families with, you know, high school kids are better able to afford the homes.
Okay. I just noticed that, I thought that was interesting. Okay, moving on to the old business. We have the follow-up to questions. Does anyone have any comments or further discussion that need to be had on?
No. Thankful for the document.
Yes, I like, yeah. Working really well, yeah.
Good. I did let Board Chair Thompson know that if at any time there's information that you wish you had, if you just reach out, I'll make sure I provide it. But at this time, I'll just continue to do this format until you need something different.
Oh, and I did, when we did agenda planning, we kind of looked back over the old superintendent report that we used to get. There were two items on there that we're going to go ahead and bring back, which would be the just notices of when new developments are coming in. We're being kept in the loop on that. And then the other one was, oh, we were good at, we're... I didn't believe that we wanted to have the work order report that kind of showed, you know, light bulbs and toilet paper that went to school. But, in the event there are, you know, planned big, like, this is what we're tackling at this school, that will be kept in the loop on that.
Expenses for maintenance and tools, that's what she asked for.
Yeah.
And the other thing I will be bringing also that kind of ties into that, that you had asked for previously, was the monthly, each month, the principal and the head custodian do a walkabout at the school for safety and just facility needs types of things. And I, I will be providing those. So I'll have the September ones by the end of this month, so I'll bring Septembers to the October board meeting.
Perfect. Awesome. Moving into the consent agenda. Do we have any questions, comments regarding the minutes that need to be approved? So there's a lot. We should note that four of them are special meetings and workshops. Two are actual board meetings.
Yeah.
No questions? Okay. The committee, or the committee meetings to be accepted, are there any questions or comments on those? The HR items, we have the board book memo, alternate authorizations and resignations. Do we have any conversations, comments on those? There was one I did have. It was on an alternate authorization. I'm just curious, Burke, and I'm sure you can help me with this. When looking at the alternate authorizations, we've got one person that's at 156 credits towards her program and one that's at 64. That seems like a 64 is a lot lower than the 156, meaning they're fairly new into their program, or?
So, the state only requires in order for them to do an emergency provisional, to have an associate's degree.
Okay.
So...
Well, that's good to know.
36 credits.
Okay, right, okay.
So...
All right.
Big.
I was just curious, because I thought, well, what's going on here? But that makes sense. And then we have the regular and special bills. Were there any comments or questions on the regular and special bills? Oh, and utilities? No.
Yeah, I have a question. I wasn't sure and I couldn't, I found things, but I didn't want to, there's something on there called Renaissance. It's a math reading and science subscription renewal. But I wasn't sure what that was, Renaissance.
It's a, we've had it in the district since I was a teacher and in the classroom. So Star Reading, I don't know if you remember that program, Bob, but it's...
Oh, yeah, I did, I remember that, okay.
Yeah, it's that company. And so it allows kids to, it does lots of things. They can read a book and take a quiz to do, to check their comprehension. There's some math practice on the math side and there's some reading practice on the reading side.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, what was the Heritage Health BBQ?
That would have been the summer program.
That the summer camp?
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha, all right. No, I was happy to see, like you were saying, all the different maintenance things on there. That was nice to see in the curriculum and district-wide copy paper and...
Paper was on there.
Glad we have paper again. Some of the other things that were on there, that was, well, and I think it's important too that they, I mean, there was quite a bit, there was replacement of two furnaces, a boiler, the carpet. There's actually quite a few repairing all of parking lots district-wide, or district-wide, but not all of them. But yeah, paint for the gyms.
We're making strides.
Yeah, yeah. I'm good, yeah.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Gordon, consent agenda.
I'm going to abstain because my daughter's on the HR items list, so...
Not a worry. I'll second. Hearing the motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have curriculum, supplemental resources for board consideration. We did have...
I had a request from one of our librarians when we have our parent feedback. Oftentimes, they're basing their suggestion as to whether or not we should prove it on reviews that they're, they've read online, but not actually reading the book. And so the librarian was just asking the question if it would be possible prior to maybe tabling that book and giving the librarians an opportunity to read the books and then be able to present to the board before you make your final determination?
Okay.
If that is something the board would be open to.
What do you guys think?
That's great. Yeah. Yeah, I would love the opinion of somebody that's...
Just who's actually read it, yeah. And we're asking a lot of this curriculum committee because, because lists are...
There's a lot of books on here.
So there's no way that they can, there's no way we can ask them to read all of those books in three weeks, so...
And I'm greatly appreciative of their...
Their work.
I am curious, I'm gonna go here, I can't remember. The Core Project supplement that's on here for Timberlake Middle School. According to their website, it's already at our junior high. So is that accurate?
We've, they've been using it for several years.
Five, five years.
But they have not started this year because it haven't come to this board for approval, so they're waiting.
Okay. Because we've got lots of accolades on their website citing our school, so I was like, whoa. We're already using it, so, okay.
That would be why. And we do have a couple of Timberlake Middle School people here who can speak to the Core Project if you have questions.
Yeah, it looks like there's the improbably story. Do you know anything about that one?
I mean, I read all the reviews, several of the reviews and some of the comments and it's exactly what the reviews say, but I haven't read the book, so I can't.
Okay.
Have you read the book?
No.
The improbably?
Okay.
It's a very improbably?
No.
It's a short, it looks like it's a short reading, but...
I'm just more concerned about the fact that the math and concept wouldn't be wrong. That, what, what, I mean...
Right.
Unless the gist of the story is, is a perspective of that, I don't know. I mean, I haven't read the book.
So that's why our librarians could read for you?
Right. Is the founder of the Core Project, do you know, is he associated with Lakeland? Because he's local.
He is local. He's only associated through his work with the Core Project. His wife actually, she's a bus driver.
Oh, okay.
His kids.
I was gonna say, it's great, right? So, yeah. And I've, I've done one of their core days up at the high school with freshmen. It was awesome.
Okay.
It was, yeah.
It's really about character building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And learning to build relationships and stuff, especially for those new freshmen in high school. So it's kind of... I don't know. It's hard without having a full understanding of what's being presented.
Would you like, Shannon and Melanie can speak to some of what that looks like? They teach those lessons.
Okay, that'd be great.
So I'm Shannon Ryder and I'm the principal assistant at Timberlake Middle School and Timberlake High School. And I'm Melanie Worth, I am the library lead up to Timberlake Middle School. Before being the principal assistant, though, I've been a teacher at Timberlake for the past six years, so I've taught these lessons. And each year, so there's like course one, course two, course three for middle school. It's all the same 35...
Topics.
Topics. They just rotate, it has different activities each year. And so, so you don't end up with sixth graders doing the same lesson three times, which would get a little bit boring.
Right.
It starts with a, you know, message that we're focusing towards and then there's an activity and some discussion after. And we usually just go through, we don't have time to do 35 lessons, so we just pick the ones that relate best to our focus for the year. So our Tiger Matrix, like trustworthy, integrity, grit, empathy, and respect.
Right.
And we would be happy to exclude any, if you, you know, we were uncomfortable with certain ones, we could definitely leave them out. And this happens once a week.
Okay.
Yeah. It's about 30 minutes, yeah.
Is it done, I mean, in a specific class period? Is it done at an assembly, what, how is...
So we used to have Tiger Time, which was just, we'd do a later, later start to first period on Mondays. And so it would be about 30, 45 minutes.
And we did it all as a whole school at the same time?
Yeah. So it's a smaller group setting with an adult, so you can kind of see, get more kids engaged in the conversations and stuff.
Okay.
But this year, we're gonna switch it to our ROR classes?
Yeah.
Okay. What are the ROR classes?
Yeah, so this was a class that we put together, kind of like an advisory or just a period where they can make sure they are getting their, their minutes finished for their practice lessons, make sure they're getting, in like math and reading, make sure they're getting any work done that they need to get finished, working on student-led conferences. Basically, any of the extra things that we're pulling minutes out of our ELA and math classes, we just put a class together so that they can have that time.
Okay. So Timberlake Middle School runs a seven-period day, where Lakeland Middle School runs a six-period day.
Okay.
And their seventh period allows for some additional help for kids to get some of that work done.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so any of our small group instruction, we try to pull just from that class, so they're not missing any of their elective something.
Can you give the board some ideas of some of the topics?
So they're making connections, grit, respect, teamwork, honesty, listening. The lesson on listening is really interesting. It just has them think about when someone's talking to you, are you just waiting for your turn to talk? Are you engaging in really listening to what they're saying and being a, providing good feedback and being present for that? Friendship, responsible decision-making, those kinds of things.
Okay. I know one of the lessons that I kind of read through and reviewed, their focus was on emphasizing, the concept behind it was basically, you know, if, if you know someone else is disadvantaged, then you should, you should, it, the implication was that you should, in a sense... I'm not wording this right, but they're disadvantaged, so you need to sacrifice, so they're no longer disadvantaged. That was the concept behind the lesson. And that type of approach concerns me.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that lesson. We looked at a couple while we were waiting for the executive session that we thought, you know, like, maybe the diversity lesson, and we never taught it in the five years. We just, that just hasn't been one that we've focused... that just hasn't been one that we focused on.
Okay.
So any of those, we just read through them and think, is this something that aligns with what we're focusing on this year? And then we exclude or use it, just depending on that.
Okay.
But yeah, any of that are uncomfortable.
But absolutely, if you have a question on one of them, and we can give you the list of everything that's in the course. If you have a question on them, I can open up the lessons and show you the whole lesson to that.
Okay.
And then if it's something that you don't feel comfortable with, we could just tell them that one's excluded.
Okay, yeah, because my, my only concern is if they're gonna be paralleling on the concepts of critical race theory, then we can't have that in the school. So that's, that's my only hesitation, especially on the one that I was like, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not familiar with that, and I have done all of the lessons. I've been doing this for, since the beginning, I started this with the school, so.
Okay, so you've done the diversity lessons?
Um, no, I've just, I've done all the, well, diversity, I don't know, I don't remember that. We didn't do this one last year, yeah, this was last year.
Yeah, so in the whole time we use the program, we've never done all of the lessons, all the way through. There's just, we don't have time to get through every single one.
Right, okay.
So we've always picked through.
Okay.
And we could even send, you know, this is the first eight we're planning to use.
Okay.
How do you feel about these eight ahead of time?
Well, I mean, the parent input has been, um, really significant on the association with Castle. Because Castle's associated with critical race theory and it's just, we're just trying to do our due diligence to maintain that distance from an acknowledgement that, you know, we might be considering concepts of critical race theory.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's my only, I guess, hesitation. But, um, I mean, Randy, if you've been, if you've participated in it, that's.
Well, and that was a one-day, one-day thing, and it wasn't the middle school stuff.
Oh, okay, it was high school.
Pretty cool.
Okay.
Which they use the same program.
Mm-hmm. The focus is generally just on respecting others and, you know.
Which we should do, yes.
Yes, how to have civil discourse and, you know, disagree with each other, and that's okay.
Agree to disagree.
Right, right, yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions on? Okay. Well, thank you, Lady Swann.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the supplemental resources?
I don't have anything, I mean, I think it's quite good. We've been listed, that's for sure.
That it is, it seems to happen in school stores. And that's okay. Well, then I can entertain a motion at this time on the supplemental resources. I move to approve the list of supplemental resources as presented.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion, uh, fails. Um, I would entertain a new motion at this time. I'd be willing to make that motion. Um, I would like to, um, respect the parent feedback and those books that, um, are of question or concerned, that we would hold those out. Um, I would, I'm really apprehensive on the core project without actually seeing what we are really doing. I mean, because if there's all this, all this to choose from and we're just picking and choosing, that just kind of concerns me, given their alignment with Castle and the stressors from the parents that were like, please don't, because it crosses nothing. Here, there, maybe nowhere. But, um, I am willing to set out the books that are in question with the librarians, table those books. Um, for the core project, I would like a little bit more, um, hands-on, touchy-feely. I mean, if we have that, we can table core as well until we can actually look at the material, make our own decisions, um, and go from there. So my motion would be to follow the parent input, table the items recommended on there, um, but then approve the remaining list as presented.
Okay, I, I second that.
Great, having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the CHOP.
Before you, before you leave that, the suggestion was made that they could maybe bring the six or eight or whatever you're planning on using this year, and we could look at those specifically.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Do you guys have access to all of that digitally, right?
I do.
Would it, do we want to bring that in October, or if we access it digitally, send it to you at another time, so that, how do you want them to bring that? Is it the October board meeting, or?
Is everything digital on this program? Okay.
Um, well, they're PDS, so basically it's just a teacher, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's how you, how you would run the lesson, like a lesson.
I can print the lessons that we want to use, if you want.
I don't know that we have, I mean, yeah, but I think electronic is fine, where we get stuck is
that we can all preview it before, but then we're stuck as far as making a decision, it has to be done in the open. Um, but it would be great to at least get it and then.
That gives us a little amount of time to look at them.
And it's not a ton of, I mean, it's maybe three pages per lesson, so it's not, you're not looking at those things, but.
Perfect.
So, um, and then I have a question about how will that affect, um, the, the program is, I mean, is October located, or second Wednesday in October, that gives you the rest of this month?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
And then if Lakeland isn't using it and wants to, if you've got lessons, just, and it, and maybe they're the same ones, maybe they're not, but if we could just preview those as well, then great.
Yeah, are you planning on? I can print just the, like, unit one?
Um, well, we're in course two, so we'll just look at which ones we would plan to use from here.
And you can just link them in, you don't have to print them out, we don't have to look at that expense, but just.
Yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
And we were just, we'll do sixth, seventh and eighth grade?
Oh, okay, perfect. Excuse me. The child protection unit scenarios. Moving on to that, um, we held out the child protection unit, um, due to the language that was in their child protection unit deal. Don't like this language any better.
Yeah, it's hard to have the conversation about inappropriate touch without it sounding that way.
Remind me again, Lisa, is the child protection unit taught in a group setting, or is it?
Yeah, it's in a classroom.
Do, would they be using the seventh scenarios, or is it kind of the temperature of the, the group of kids they're talking to, they think one?
They created a bank.
Okay.
Of options.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on these? Or conversations, I guess, is the more.
Well, I understand, I have the same concerns. Um, I think that most people would just reading the language. Unfortunately, we've had this conversation before, I don't think that these conversations happen in the house with a lot of our students, um. I guess it would be, um, an opt-in format if this was part of that.
This is without the permission, written permission from parents, if the child doesn't participate.
Um, so I see, I see both sides, even though it is, um, and I don't know about the whole in a group setting. I guess, so is, is there anybody here that teaches these, or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Sadly, um, I would tell you, in my tenure as principal at Bede Kiefer, I had three uh, girls who disclosed based on these uncomfortable conversations that have to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And they were all prosecuted and they were all convicted. And so there is a need. Um, it's unfortunate, but there is a need. Yeah.
Good. Thank you for the discussion.
Nope, that was exactly what I needed to hear.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time. I'll move to approve the list of child protection unit scenarios as presented. Do we have a second? Doesn't sound like it. Motion dies. Do we need further discussion?
Uh, we're verifying, uh, this is only done with parent prior opportunity to view the material and approve.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Would someone like to bring a second motion for another motion?
Just one for a second?
No, I, because there was none.
You didn't second soon enough, you didn't ask your question soon.
You can bring.
Die for lack of a second, is that?
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
I was looking on the drop, we know I'm good with that, so.
Uh, I will re-move to approve the child protection unit scenarios as presented.
Taken away? You're removing?
No, I will.
Re-remove.
I will move again.
You're gonna let it die again?
Thanks, Bob. Trying to get something done tonight, I was like.
I'm not the only one here, you know. I'll say.
All right, having a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The three, uh, in favor, one against, motion carries. Moving on to the ELA science adoption protocol.
Dr. Paz, we can answer any questions that you might have about that?
Seems pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
Very thorough, detailed.
It's great work, thank you.
Thank you.
It is, it's awesome.
A lot of it was put into it, it's obvious, yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Or comments or conversation to have on the incredible, uh, protocol that we are provided with? No, it's great work, it's awesome. I'll take a motion at this time. I would move that we approve the ELA science adoption protocol as presented.
I'll second that one.
A motion and a second.
You just lead.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the student clubs. Uh, we have two new clubs coming before us for approval.
Yeah, I think that we need to review our board policy on student clubs before we do any more approving of or denying of any clubs, because our non, our non-sponsored clubs are supposed to be student-initiated.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say that both of these clubs should be denied. Because they're not student-initiated. I, wait, I can't for sure say that, because I don't know who Will Griffin is. I don't know if that is a student or a faculty member.
Uh, he's an adult from outside, um, of the school.
Yeah, and they, they can't.
We, they can be, they can be part of the club, but we have to have an adult, uh, we have to have a staff member also be there as a supervisor.
Actually, our board policy, and I hate to, um.
Because we have, at Timberlake Middle School, we have an adult leading the, um, drama, who is not a staff member.
Non-school persons may not direct, conduct, control or regularly attend activities.
So we have a couple that are like that, so we have to reevaluate that.
And that's for non-sponsored or non-curriculum clubs, the following guidelines will apply. And that is, the formation of non-sponsored or non-curriculum clubs shall be student-initiated. And the second sentence of that same rule is, non-school persons may not direct, conduct, control or regularly activities.
Okay, so the boxing one is, that is a staff member and that was student-initiated?
Okay, so I think on our applications then, if they are student-initiated, we need that to be marked on that, so that we know before we can go in. I mean, they, they shouldn't, that should be weeded out before they even come to the board, is whether they are student-initiated or not. Um, because I think that there's a couple that we have already approved that quite possibly were not, and they are, so there's.
So we need to table this.
Yeah. We need to go back to our own policy.
Policy. And make sure that everything is in alignment.
Okay.
So I motion that we table the student clubs until further review.
And I don't know what we do with the, if we just leave the ones that were in previously as such, but they're not supposed to be led by, so I don't know what we need to do to ones that we have previously approved, if we need to go back and.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, that was sort of a cleanup we were trying to do, because nothing had come before the board, so.
No, I absolutely agree.
Were presented to the board, just given old information, you know, and so I think we just need to look at all of it together, policy, the clubs, and whatever you have knowledge of, and then, uh, continue to clean it up.
Yeah. And they may have been student-initiated back when they started, way back, but then it was whoever is happy, you know, because if they are school, and that needs to be another checkbox on their, well, it is, um, on their application, um, whether it is sponsored or non-sponsored. Um, so that's part of the, you know, if they are sponsored, they don't have to be student-initiated.
Right, right.
But if they are not sponsored, they have to be student-initiated and they can't have non-school.
Well, I do think.
And if they're religious or political in nature, the student or the district employee that monitors cannot participate in any way, shape or form, so.
Well, and on the boxing club, um, I do think we need to have liability insurance.
I just want to just comment, many, many years ago, probably prayer to anyone in this room.
Except the other store?
I actually had boxing in high school, but it was a sport. And it was eliminated as a sport.
That's too bad.
Because of the problems surrounding it and the liability issues and so forth, so I would put up a big word of caution about going there.
Okay, so there is a motion on that board, or on that table, or whatever, but it's to table this.
I will move to table.
I are moved.
Okay, oh, I was second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to, uh, out-of-district staff weavers. Uh, it appears that we have a staff member who is out of district that would like to, uh, that believes that she should be able to bring in children that aren't hers, because they live in the same residence. that believes that she should be able to bring in children that aren't hers because they live in the same residence. Do you have any input on this?
Um, I mean, you can read the story and empathize with, with what they have going on, but every family has a story.
Correct.
And we have said no to some hard stories. So, I would struggle to say yes to, to make exceptions, I guess. Once we start making exceptions, it's easy to make a lot of them.
Well, and as we were advised by the council, when we were addressing the whole border issue, was that if you say yes to one, you've given yourself the expectation that you're saying yes to everyone, so don't close the borders. So, that's, that's where we are. Do we need to have any conversation on this waiver that's being requested? I do not. I'll entertain a motion at this time. I'm going to deny the, the request for district staff waiver.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify a question. So, the question before the board for the, even though it's titled out-of-district staff waiver, this current staff person is asking for children other than theirs because they share the same domicile.
Correct.
Okay, so these are not staff's children?
Her children are coming.
Yeah.
She's requesting that she bring the others with her.
Okay, all right, I'll second the motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is proposed changes to the district mission statement.
So, as we've been talking to patrons about who Lakeland is, what we represent, and what we do in our schools, the, uh, the overwhelming theme of the conversation is, it always comes back to S E L. People have a lot of concern. Um, in our district, when we talk about social emotional learning, we've always talked about, you know, learning how to get along with each other, how to get invited to play a game. Definitely not what people think of now when they hear S E L. And because it is such a trigger for people and it's not what we do, we thought, let's just take it, it doesn't need to be in the mission statement. So, we simplified it, um, and it's just maximizing student learning for every student, every day, in all environments. And just leave it at that, um, but we wanted the board's blessing.
Come back to education focus? Any questions, comments?
I proudly move to approve this mission statement.
I proudly second that.
Having a lot of pride in this. Having a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
It might take us a little bit of time to replace the mission statement on the document, so as you see them and it's not changed, if you just let us know, bring it to our attention, we'll get it done.
Did we change it on the website?
Not yet, because you had approved it yet.
I understand that.
We will change it.
Okay. Um, we have the Cooten County Sheriff's Office M O U. At the last board meeting, it was brought to our attention that after everything was agreed to, they then had their meeting and things changed. So, um, what's before us is a change, is accepting the new M O U with the increased salary.
Yeah, so they, uh, in May, they gave me what the officer's salary was planning, what they planned it to be, and then the county commissioners just a couple of weeks ago, um, approved a new salary matrix, and so there was another bump that they weren't anticipating in May. So, they, commissioners did sign the M O U that Board Chair Thompson signed, and I just got it back, um, from the new captain. And he also asked when he met with me if we would be willing to increase our percentage that we pay from sixty-five to seventy. And I said no. Um, at least not at this date. We've already entered into agreements with the other two agencies and paying sixty-five percent of the costs. And I just, to, I, to be fair, we have to do the same for everybody, but I anticipate that that will come back in May and we'll have to have a conversation.
That's kind of a double-edged sword because they're asking for an increase based on the fact that they increased pay.
And they hold a pay lesson.
We're in the same budget that we've already established for, and they want us to increase.
And they're also holding our delinquent taxes and not giving us the seventy thousand dollars that we're supposed to get. Yeah, so.
Well, that can be a conversation for another day. Any further questions, comments, or?
So, we're, we're understanding that at this point.
Well, he's, he's been working because we, we had agreed to the M O U and we had, Michelle signed it, and we had verbally agreed with the county. And then the commissioners came back and said, nope, we're going to change it, so we're already into the year. If we chose not to approve it and didn't have coverage at the school, we would hear from our parents.
And what we're agreeing to is just the change in the salary, not the change in the percentage that we pay.
How much?
Was five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollar change?
Yeah.
Can I get an extra five grand?
Oh, well, the, the, uh, on the draft M O U, it says it's, uh, the highlighted change is sixty-one fifty-six thirty, so six thousand dollars.
Oh, sorry, six thousand.
Is that, well, is that, is that correct? Okay. Because it was the fifty-six ninety-nine or whatever, okay.
Nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, um, okay, so that's the monthly installment. Gotcha. Okay, I misspoke. You're right, it is about five grand different, almost six grand.
And where pre-tells us that five thousand dollars? Brian.
Your salary, Bob.
One of those fluctuations that happen all the time in a budget.
Same place the bus increase is coming from.
Uh, where is this S R O currently covering?
Our board.
Okay, that's what I thought of.
I'll entertain a motion at this time. I move to approve the, uh, M O U with the Cooten County Sheriff's Office with the increases presented.
One second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three in favor, one opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the supervision and evaluation plan.
This was the document we discussed at the workshop.
Right.
And it is by statute required to be approved annually.
Now, this is what we're approving to support the I P L P that we utilize.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments, conversations on this?
No, ma'am.
You look like you're thinking about. Okay. One moment. I'll entertain a motion, uh, at this time on the supervision and evaluation plan.
Well, I do have one question.
Okay.
Um, did we limit the number of pages?
We significantly curtailed it, yes. And, um, if you talk to any staff members and they, the teachers, oh, Jason's here. Um, they were very happy with the changes that we made as far as the, the amount of work that they needed to do. Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that there. Yeah, they were happy at breakfast. They were all there.
You were like, no. We went for the low hanging fruit, the easy wins first.
Don't give away your game plan.
Yeah, don't let them know they're good. Just kidding.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion at this time. I'll move to approve the Lakeland Supervision Evaluation Plan twenty-two, twenty-three is presented. Starting. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the capital project, we, last board meeting, they brought capital projects, but we didn't have any, uh, information regarding cost. So, they've come back with the costs.
And L-ten and L-eleven are all, and L-twelve are all capital projects type, um, conversations, so.
And they're not part of the principal facilities.
Right.
Okay, so the principal facilities, this is what principals have asked for. And then L-ten, L-eleven, and even L-twelve are ones that we've asked for information on for approving. So, we can kind of look at them all, I guess, at the same time, and then, uh, have a conversation.
The security camera spreadsheet, was that information that was collected from the S R O's input or, okay?
Uh, Paul Galian, who is the low voltage tech, um, and does all of the work for us, went to each school and he spoke with the principal, and then either the S R O or the armed district safety specialist, and they worked together to put that plan together.
And then the, um, the keyless access points?
Those numbers came directly from the principals.
Okay. Card readers?
So, um, at the three high schools, um, they would cost a little bit more because, um, uh, they would need to see who's, who's coming in those doors.
On the security camera audit?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, there's card readers?
Yeah, that's a technology piece that, uh, Justin, um, said that we needed in order to add the cameras to our, our system. Brian can answer that question better than I can. He's, she's talking about, um, Justin said we needed, I think, um, two servers, Brian, and then card readers for, to add, um, additional cameras.
The security camera, we've got card readers, but.
Oh, the numbers of them, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
They don't know what they are.
Card readers, she's wondering what this is, Brian.
Yeah, what are card readers?
I'm, on that, I'm not sure as far as what the technology is. It might be, uh, specific encoder decoder for the camera to communicate with the system. If they're not buying, they're buying, you know, a lot of times, some of these camera systems, you buy our turnkey system. Um, you know, where the software and it's all integrated. I think we've been buying cameras that were lower cost, and then usually what you have to do is have an adapter to effectively talk to the system. That's, I guess, I'd have to get more information from Justin if that's what it is.
Okay. I'm wondering. I'm just wondering if maybe there's some crossover from the keyless entry to the card reader on the security camera audit. Because, like, T M S doesn't need any card readers. That doesn't make any sense if it's part of the security camera. But then when I go over to the keyless entry, Timberlake Middle School doesn't need any keyless, uh, access points.
So, they could be, it could be an overlap. We can clarify that with Justin.
Okay. Because I would think the card reader would be that thing like you.
This way, you do?
Yeah, yeah.
And if they have the doorbell attached to it, there's a video camera that's attached to it. So, it could be that the card readers are required for video cameras.
Okay.
It could be, I'm not sure. And I do like at Timberlake Middle, we did recently add some of the, uh, access control when we put in the, uh, portable building.
Right.
So, that actually sort of covered one side that wasn't covered previously.
Although, only Timberlake High School, to, to, um, Lakeland High School and Mountain View High School are getting the doorbell with cameras.
Okay.
So, that, that doesn't actually.
Okay, well, they.
Some I don't know.
They do need, um.
I'll ask him.
Lenses, four lens, I'm assuming cameras, and one lens cameras, but they don't need any card readers.
At Timberlake?
At Timberlake Middle, and then on the keyless access point is zero.
Yeah, they're good because we added when we put the portable in at Timberlake Middle.
Yeah, it would be good to have a little bit more info on this, but I do want to, from a board perspective, I would really like to move forward, with the security camera situation and the keyless access. I do think that's, that should become a priority. With respect, though, I don't want to not acknowledge that, you know, every principal needs something significant done in their building. So, I don't know how we navigate this.
Well, for, you know, the safety concerns and after our safety update and meeting with the S R O's and all that, I don't know how we, and, and there wasn't, you know, like, we have, one school has this, this school has none, this one have three, this.
Right.
I, I think we need to, um, bring all that together so that everybody has as far as they were concerned, what they need.
Right.
The armed specialists and the S R O's, um, and also the, to get, uh, to try and help them resolve the issue of doors that are propped open.
Right.
If we can get key access to those doors that are always propped open, which typically were, I think they said that go into the, wherever they go, I guess I shouldn't say it out loud, but, you know, I think if we, you know, we should tackle those, I mean, I think they're fairly significant for, for many reasons. After listening to them, and then trying to get through the, uh, the list for the principals, um.
Why say we approve everything on Mountain View's?
Yeah, Mountain View's.
Yeah, you gotta go all the way across to the very end. Done. I find it hard to believe.
Oh.
But let's just do it.
Well, we did a lot at Mountain View last year.
Didn't?
Mm-hmm, they got new carpeting this summer and flooring. They've got, they all, new paint, um.
Oh.
We put, we put a lot of love into Mountain View last year.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
That would be white.
Have we put any love into their gym?
The gym desperately needs to be painted. Yeah.
That's as another middle schools, I hear.
Yes, although they do have a lovely, large green hawk on the wall now, which really lightens and brightens the room up.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Wish we had a total for each one of these columns.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to have a low and a high, and make it a that they want as totals, cause some of them are, the ranges are.
Yeah, you have a range there.
Are, are very rough estimates, you know, depending on the scope and level of the project.
Right.
Could you, you go back to the slide that had all the camera stuff on it? What was that total about, two? Hundred ninety?
Where would the two servers go? Would that be in the tech department, or is that in the building?
Brian's nodding, yes.
They'd be the technology at the Lakeland Middle School.
Okay, in the tech department.
Those are pretty hard costs, I mean, pretty firm costs, you know.
Yeah.
I, I, those, yeah, uh, came from Justin looking at current pricing. You know, the way things are going, I could see, you know, if you put it at P O even today, sometimes it could be a little bit higher, or something like that, but it should be in the ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, he, he reached out to the company about the numbers for me.
So I have a, a, a question, um, I noticed that some of the uh, school principals would like card readers for safety concerns, so would they, are they covered under this, uh, under that card reader?
Yep.
List too, okay.
Yeah, so Lakeland Middle School had that on there, and it's, and then Brian put in the comments that it's on the
Okay.
Plan position.
Is there any reason we wouldn't go ahead with the entirety of that?
Of what, the cameras?
Yeah.
I would, I would say there isn't a reason, I think it needs to be done.
Yeah, I think that all of the cameras and the card readers, um, get that out of the way.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that would be my motion.
I would say.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bearing none, the motion carries. Okay, with respect to the track at Lakeland, um, we do have some proposals Brian's gotten for us. Do we know where we stand with what we're able to um, with the booster club, if they're willing or able?
They ha, they don't have any money to uh, put toward the project. Uh, Kate was, um, Forzman is working on a grant through, I think it Dick's Sporting Good.
Okay.
Um, so if we get that, we, that would reimburse the district
Okay.
um, that much money, I think it's a fifty thousand dollar grant she's trying to get.
Okay.
Um, both of these companies, um, are a part of those, um, what do we call them, Brian, the uh, bid, the co-op?
Um, you know, they're both part of purchasing cooperatives.
So we don't have to do anything more than look at these two quotes and decide which one we like best. Brian has um, materials.
So both um, Baynan and the Track Doctor, they actually came out and walked the, the track. So the quotes we got from Baynan were really for two different levels of higher quality track, which, these are the samples that actually the Track Doctor gave them, so you can see. They had one quote that was only less than two hundred thousand dollars, and this is really sort of what they would be doing. They sort of spray the surface on. Here you can see, this is the permeable surfaces that are the ones that are higher.
Okay.
Um, so the Track Doctors, the higher level surface is that, which was at the two hundred fifty thousand dollar quote. Baynan's quote, that's a similar product, is about three hundred. Um, well, their products are a little different, but at least that, you wanna say equivalent, that Baynan actually had another one that's higher, and so does the Track Doctor, and that both got up to around four hundred thousand dollars. And there's even a, you know, surface levels that are higher than that. That track, I think, like the one that's not blue, the sort of the orange-red, I think that level of track is what they recently did at Troy, Idaho, and that was the Track Doctor. Baynan did like, well, high school, they, they're a big company, I mean, they've done University of Oregon, you know, that track program, and, but that's the, Baynan, I mean, they're the track company that's been in the Northwest sort of forever. And Track Doctor is newer, I think they did Jerome High School, they might have done Pullman, so they both, I think, would, you know, are doing tracks and seem to be doing good work. Unlikely they could have it ready for the spring season at this point. And the cost they had would be a little higher, we'd have to have a performance bond, that's the Idaho code, so that's gonna add at least three percent. So there'll be some additional costs. They also did quote resurfacing the like the pole walk run, those things, I don't think that, I mean, that's be probably a few thousand dollars more, but we'd wanna do that while we're having that done.
So Track Doctor's two fifty-four, I think, and Baynan is three oh seven.
Yeah, and that's sort of that, that's probably the most apples-to-apples comparison.
And at the last board meeting, Trustee Jones made a motion to set aside a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so just recognizing that it's coming in more than that.
So the impermeable structure, structural spray would be uh, this, that there, um, if you look at the Track Doctor's quote, so the first cost, um, the two fifty-four, which, which one are they referring to, do you know?
I think this is the Plexi Track.
Yeah, the, the impermeable bed at EPDM, that's actually even higher.
Okay.
That, that's closer, if you go back to the um, that four seventeen, that's that, those are the apples and apples.
Mm-hmm.
The, if you go, the other is if you look at the two fifty-four, the other impermeable,
Mm-hmm.
that two fifty-four is equivalent to the three oh seven.
Which is the one, the rust colored one.
This one.
Right. This, this, I'm not sure what, you know, he just gave me another option. They also had another quote, they just do the surface Track Doctor, where they wouldn't even scrape the old surface off, they'd just go over on the current top, and that was way cheaper, that's like a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think that would last very long, so, I mean, but I mean, they're doing stuff from the lowest end to a little higher.
What about the asphalt failure areas?
Both estimators who came out thought that the asphalt was, would be fine. You know, that they would come in and then, you know, they definitely come in and if they see some of the, you know, smaller cracks and that they need to seal, they do that work, that's part of the bid. Um, the Track Doctor recommended at some point, and you don't, you could do it before or after, that you should probably want curving around that track. We didn't look at the cost of that. Um, that was their recommendation, and part of it, I think, my guess is the track, when it was first in, might have been a little more slope banked, and probably over time, it's settled a little bit as far as the slope and that would. I think that's why they recommended it, they didn't say you had to have it, but it was a recommendation. And they, they said that's something that you could install after the installation of the actual track surface if we were chosen.
And you don't, there's no anticipation that this could be done before spring?
I, I, I don't think so, it's already mid-September. I mean, they, they'd have to get in there while it's not raining, and we haven't, you know, on the work, or we have football season going. Before the rain, you can't do this type of work if there's any type of weather. And temperature can't get too cold, if it gets below like fifty-five, then it doesn't heat, so.
Okay.
I think we're, it's, you know, so really it wouldn't be installed until after the, the track season.
Okay.
Yeah.
Warranties, what kind of, oh, five-year.
Right, so that's five-year, I think that's similar in Baynan, and they, you can see the bonding, three percent of bonding is required, which it is by code.
It's a five-year warranty, but the track life is fifty years?
Yeah, the, the lower end one that was, this quote's not showing that was probably be an eight to ten-year life, this is, you know, they're considering ten to fifteen for the higher level track. Which is, I think the track was last done in about twenty years ago. There you go.
Who did these come from?
That was a Track Doctor.
I wish we think, we had a sample of the Plexi Track, I'm looking at it online, it actually looks.
I'm wondering if this is, no, this says impermeable.
Yeah, no, the Plexi Track is multiple, multiple layers, and it's a uh.
These are both impermeable.
Right.
There's two different ones.
Yeah.
Right, but one is two fifty-four and one is four fourteen?
Yes.
So this isn't Plexi Track Accelerator? Cause this is thirteen millimeter impermeable sandwich system uh, available in, in embedded or encapsulated textures.
That, that's the four fourteen.
This is the four fourteen.
Yeah.
I like this one. I don't like this one, this one hurts. I know shoes are on it, but.
Kelsey's a runner and she didn't like it either.
I just see little people falling in circles.
Did they give you a, a timeline on how long it would be on-site, do you want?
Um, yeah, it doesn't, it's not a, a huge they said if you're, if you're laying new asphalt down, then you have to have like twenty-eight days.
Yeah, I just noticed that, that's why I was.
Right, um, yeah, the installation could be done in roughly about a, a week.
A week?
Yeah. Yeah, cause they have to, you know, obviously, there's a day they're doing demo. I don't know how long that would take, but then right after that, they would definitely do the, the sealing of the, of the track, and they lay it down, and then put it down with colors. If you just got the black track, you know, black and white, that could actually save some dollars off this, they quoted having
The green and the.
You know, see, there could be green and gold, or you could have a green and maybe gray with, you know, there's different ways, but some of the color selection can save, even if you get colors, can save some dollars, cause they're more common.
Yeah, I'm wondering, cause it looks, um, that's why I wish we could have got all three, because when you go to their website, that Plexi Track and pull up the what they're showing.
This looks.
I think that's it, yeah.
And that's what you brought in.
Yes, yeah, it's the, yeah, the accelerator.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what it says on there, the red one, is the two twenty-one, two twenty, which is uh, about fifty thousand more than what we initially, right, Trustee Jones, and she said.
And thirty thousand less than the two fifty-four?
Mm-hmm.
How glad do the folks at the high school wanna see this happen?
They'll.
How much are they prepared to contribute?
Well, the booster, we went to the booster club and they don't, they've been giving money to teams, so they don't have the funds in their account right now to, to donate, but Kate Forzman, who is the vice president, I think, of the booster club, is writing a grant to, no, Dick's Sporting Good, to, a fifty thousand dollar grant, to try to help offset some of the costs.
Yeah, there were.
And the high school accounts? Any discussion with them about what they're willing to contribute? They, they receive sponsorship money, don't they, from various businesses?
Yeah, because Jason, he's sitting in the corner over there. Nobody puts baby in the corner.
Yeah. I, I just has it, local businesses are just, I mean, they are nickel to dime all the time.
I know.
Ever after.
My, the question is, when they, when they do contribute, where do those monies go?
For my baseball program, they go straight to the field, a hundred percent.
So all those businesses that have placards all over our fences out there?
On Gordon Field, they, they go to the baseball.
Yeah, it's one hundred percent baseball field, it's, I average about thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
Isn't there a sponsorship line item in the high schools' accounting?
Yeah, they have a, an account where they, if they get sponsorship dollars, that, that's where they first bring it in as revenue, and then usually they distribute it to the different activities.
We, we need to have a sit-down discussion with the, the principal about that.
I do know that there were some uh, grants that she was looking at also where they needed a dollar amount, so she could apply for the grant, because they would cover fifty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so up to fifty percent.
And that was why Bob had said, we'll set aside a hundred and.
Seventy-five.
Forty-five.
Right, which double would be more.
Three fifty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rand, Rand is the numbers girl, she is. So I can, I, we, I could definitely ask uh, Matt and Jimmy to come. I would remind the board, though, that we, we put a brand-new track in at Timberlake High School and did not require them to use their
Well, that's unfortunate.
That will, that will come up, I'm sure, so.
But we've also.
There are always trade-offs, we'll figure that one out.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, cause we've, we've also been funding everything for sports, so that's.
So, can I invite them to the October board meeting?
Yes, please. Although Lisa did ask for a special board meeting, so
Yes.
we might be able to just add that to that and make it so that we're not monopolizing the board meeting time.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you for the
Thank you, Brian.
Information there, Brian.
You're welcome. Okay, now with respect to so it sounds like we but we haven't motioned anything yet, have we? Have we?
Uh, you, did you do a motion for the cameras and the?
Y-yes, the cameras and the.
Yeah, okay, so we did motion those ones, okay, then that's, I can make them go away.
That was the cameras and the keyless.
Yes, yeah, okay, um, on the I don't even know how to begin to tackle the principal facility needs list.
I think that that, I think that we should, um, I don't know, have.
We can tail it for the special meeting, which will be here in a few days.
Well, we need more information though, too, we need, you know, yeah, we have costs here, but what pool of money are we talking about, using, what, you know, where, where are we?
Right, where is it coming from?
Going to pay for, you know, I, I just don't know what. Going to pay for, you know, I just don't know what we have truly available to make those decisions or even talk about that. I don't know if we need to have a, a workshop and.
Okay.
Talk about kind of a strategic plan as far as how we're gonna tackle those.
I think it might be smarter to do a workshop, just so that it can be designated specifically for that.
Yeah, cause it's gonna take longer than that.
Yes. Okay, so then on that note, I would motion to table the capital projects. Workshop and table the Lakeland High School track, um, for the next meeting.
One second, Pat.
Having motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, the continuous improvement plan, we had a workshop on this. Uh, we went through the demographics on it, et cetera. The numbers have been updated from this year's. And so it's just being brought forward for us to approve.
Turn down to the state until the first.
Yes.
I move to approve the SIP plan as per later.
Sure.
Having a motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we have the, uh, board. I think it's popping up all over the place, it's kind of funny. Okay, we have the opportunity to upgrade our software on Board Book. Um, there are features that we are not able to access because we are on the bottom rung. Um, that could benefit use, uh, if we do upgrade, the upgrade, I believe. Upgrade would add seven hundred and fifty dollars to what we just spent, which was twenty-five hundred. Ramona, do you want to speak to what some of the upgrades could be since you looked around?
Well, it would create, number one, it would make our documentation much more cohesive, it would all be in one spot. Um, so all of the documentation that are tied to the agendas, um, policy, all those types of things, um.
So we wouldn't be jumping back and forth.
Right, right, yeah, it would put everything in one spot. And, uh, the other thing I know that Rosanna tries to find a spot for is as we get all these committees established, we're only allowed three committees in the current version we have, so there's, we're out of room. We can't keep everybody's, you know, it'd be nice if you could log in the public and us and see every committee, all of its documentation, all of their meetings, all in one spot instead of having to click on all these attachments and then click on all their links and that was the main thing. And, um, if I remember right, when I read through this, um, if we use part of their documentation system, uh, it actually has like a quality control feature to it, so it actually will track automatically when the document was touched, who touched it, what was changed, blah, blah, blah. Sort of like looking at Google history, but it will be part of the documentation. So it would be a literal quality control, instead of trying to rely on, does anybody remember, you know, what that document was that we used to have, or it would all be in one spot. I think it would just, uh, and then we could sit and, um, I've been looking at it, go through and clean it up and sort of make it a little bit more friendly. It has the ability to be much more friendly than what we're finding, so. Um, and, and I think it would help, uh, Rosanna also tremendously in what she's trying to accomplish. With everything that's, for the seven hundred dollars, I mean. And it would give the public, you know, more information, too. That's the thing is we're, we're, we, we've hit the top of what we can use. We're running out of room on everything because of the growth and all of that.
So with the tier-two, we'd have a lot more capacity?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and functionality, yep.
Any further questions, comments, discussions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on, um, upgrading the board management software.
I'll move to approve the board management software upgrade.
To tier-two.
To tier-two, yes.
I'll second that. Having a motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Um, organizational charts bring, brought back to us for approval with, uh, the updates that we had asked for and, um, now that we've gotten new hired people, et cetera, positions, just to clarify. Do we have any questions, comments?
It's pretty.
It looks really good.
I love it.
Rebecca did a good job.
She did a great job. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Having a motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have the purchase of a new transport, of a new shop truck.
Transportation shop truck.
Transportation shop truck, yes. Don't say that too many times. When we say a hundred and thirty-seven thousand hard miles, what is that?
It is used and abused.
It's only a hundred and thirty-seven thousand miles.
Yeah, well, that truck, a lot of the miles are, are used by hauling buses.
Oh.
When they're, if they get stuck, if they're off, you know, a lot of times during the winter. Does do some plowing, or did more plowing before we contracted the plowing out. So the, the truck last, um, I actually asked, uh, you know, Jessica, I said, why are you bringing this to me right now in September and not in March when we're doing budget? She said, well, we're hoping it could, it would get through. And the last time they ran it this summer, it was just, it's, they're afraid that it, it, it may not make it the next time they need to pull a bus.
Okay.
Um, so I, they said, but maybe it will, maybe it'll last another year. Um, that's sort of where they're at, and so Rod and Bert put their request in, I went and talked to them. And they go, well, it could be, and they say, well, you know, if we get out there and it doesn't go, then we'll call Shafers and that's what the option would be for the year until they get something else. But it's just, you know, it's a, it's a twenty-year-old truck.
Okay.
And, yeah, it's just a, you know, you could probably replace the transmission and replace the engine and it'd be less than a new truck, but then, are you putting good money after bad?
Gas or diesel?
That's a gas, it's like a, um, and I think what they're looking at right now is still gas. I don't think they're looking at diesels. I, I could ask, I mean, when I, one they're looking at, you know, they're, they're calling like Robidoux and others. Do they have new, used and, um, yeah, and the price of even a used truck right now is, is, yeah, it's a big business to be in right now. So that's an estimated cost.
Gas, gas engine wouldn't be as expensive to replace with diesel engine.
Right, I think it's gas.
Hasn't got enough pension, had to do that.
Yeah. And, well, and the transmission is, is really, it's, it's struggling if they.
So what, is it four to three fifty?
Yeah.
Probably got an Allison transmission on it. I don't know, four years.
So I have a question. We have a schedule for technology items. Do we have the same for all these cars, trucks, the little carts over at the different schools and things like that? So that we have a forward-looking picture of what's coming up or needs to be replaced or?
On, for this particular truck, no. For the maintenance partner vehicles, yeah, we've been, you've seen, we've been trying to replace those cars, one or two every year. We're sort of put a little bit on hold right now, uh, to continue that effort. Unless we wanted to use some of those dollars that, after our audit, will be set aside for those type of things, you know, that sort of, you know, conversation with the board. But we have been doing that, um, for the custodial equipment at the schools. We've replaced all their snow blowers recently, um, a few, um, definitely replaced a lot of their carpet extractors and some backup that they did to clean the buildings. So we've actually caught up quite a bit on that. Do we have a consistent funding source from year to year to look at ten years out, to know that we could continue on that? No. I mean, that, I mean, that's something we'd have to build into, um, you know, really, mostly levy dollars.
Keep that comment in mind, or they talk about my facility.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and the other thing was, is, I mean, even if the board had an idea of what's coming down the, you know, if we could see the big picture, like, it was great with the principals gave us, showed us a, a big picture. These are the things that need to be done, we probably can't do them all. But the same thing with vehicles, I know we've, uh, come through with a lot of buses and, and different things. It would just be nice to know if we have another, do we have three more fifty thousand dollars coming at us? Or two more two hundred thousand dollars, or that's all I was, you know, asking?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a really good question. I mean, a lot of what we've been, what, what we're, what I've been trying to do with Mr. Ferriola and when we look at our equipment and stuff like that, and I've sort of said that for, what we're trying to hit, um, for ongoing with maintenance projects and supporting the facilities and, and those needs, is we're trying to hit all areas a little bit every year. Because if you just focus in one area, we did have to focus on roofs more than actually I would really like to. But that's the integrity of the building, you really, we're sort of where we were. But, you know, that's why we want to do a little bit of parking lots every year. We want to do some carpet and flooring every year. We want to try to hit some painting every year. Want to make sure that, you know, we do vehicles every year, um, some athletic facilities every year, some.
Little bit of everything every year.
Yeah, well, yeah, and you never, it's hard to catch up, because if, if we really wanted to look at, um, there's a lot of different ways you can look at some of these things, but honestly, when Mr. Ferriola and I go out and we'll rerate the buildings here, um, and, and the ratings won't change a whole lot from what we did our work with the architects last year. Actually, some will improve, like the Vedicave has a new roof, so that score should go up. Um, you know, things like that. But if you really want to look just from a, a formula way, that if a, that a score is a, a hundred is a new building, let's say. And then if you had a building that's scoring at a fifty and it's, uh, fifty thousand square feet, you could tell you what's construction cost right now to build a new building. And probably if you want to really bring that building up to a hundred, really to standards of what you'd build a new building a day, it'd probably be half the cost of a new building. That, and that's now, you, it's hard to tell to, to really put that in numbers sometimes, because until you get really good quotes, and when you're doing big work, and if you said, um, you know, some of these systems just get aged. For example, a building I had when I worked at Eastside School District, the plumbing was galvanized pipes and it was in the foundation. And the pipes started to break. I mean, they were, it's a fifty-year-old building, it just galvanized pipe eventually gave out. You couldn't get to it, cause it's in the foundation of the building. So you had to abandon that whole system, re-pipe the whole building area. I mean, that's just an expensive project for replumb. Now, you could have gone a, as a project for there and said, okay, every time we get a break, we'll bust into the foundation, we'll go do that fix and do it for ten thousand dollars. Or you did literally as millions of dollars project to replumb a building. So some of what we're looking is what scale of work are we looking at to resolve some of these issues? And, um, obviously, we're right now, where we're doing sort of, to extent we can, aggressive maintenance and patches and fixes, but we don't really have the resources to do like big renovations.
Right, right, yep. Yep, I definitely understand.
Sorry, that's sort of a long answer. But I think we haven't tried to be on a schedule where we're replacing vehicles, um, you know, one every year. You know, same thing with our buses, we wanted to, if we really wanted to get to scale, we'd want to do about six or seven buses every year. We have sixty buses. They should be on a twelve-year cycle, replacement cycle, cause that's our revenues. So you, just to keep on a twelve-year cycle, we'd want five buses every year. And, but we're a little bit behind, so you'd want maybe six or seven. But we haven't had the resources to do that, so we, we're doing, even though we are gonna catch up here a little bit with the six we're getting, that's good.
Okay.
So, yeah, but if you wanted us to start working on some of that, we, you know, we can start gathering some of that, you know, for the board, if that's helpful.
It would be helpful.
Okay.
Do you have any further comments, questions on the purchase of a new transportation shop truck? Any, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Actually, I do have a question, just give me a second.
Okay.
For, for, if we buy a new vehicle, can, can we get a trade-in value on the other?
Sure, we could, I don't know would it be worth it, but we could try.
But we don't want to sit in the yard, that's.
Oh, no, we'd definitely surplus it. And would use it as, yeah, it'd probably be part of the deal, that if we could trade it in, you know, we'd get it for, it's four or five thousand dollars, probably, maybe three. Sure? Yeah, we'd definitely try to add that as part of the bid, or, yeah.
I move we authorize the purchase of a new transportation vehicle.
Second, Pat. Having a motion and a second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to surplus.
So the board authorized the purchase of new handguns for our armed specialists. And, um, uh, so rather than having those three handguns that, that they were using prior, sitting in a safe, um, each of, and this is typical of law enforcement, when law enforcement agencies buy new weapons, the officers have the opportunity to buy their old weapons. Um, John Hatcher is a federal firearms, um, person with the license to be able to broker that, um, sale for us. And, um, and then the money, the dollars, so each armed special, specialist would buy the person, their weapon they've been using for four hundred dollars. And that, so that'd be twelve hundred dollars coming back to the district, which could help offset the cost of the purchase of the new weapons.
I thought that everybody, I, hmm, I question. What's your question? For surplus items, I thought they had to go to open auction and everybody has the ability to, you know, bid on.
That's a Brian question.
On items, surplus items.
It's, uh, if an item is, um, under, uh, five hundred dollars, then, uh, it, it's, uh, at really the most economical way, is sort of how policy states. Um, if it's between five hundred and a thousand, then you need to, uh, solicit informally. If it's over a thousand, then it's formal, uh, quote. So, um.
I actually remember those.
Yeah, those are sort of the breakdowns, yeah, yeah, so it's pretty low. That, that's actually following Idaho code right now.
Yeah.
At some point, I'd imagine those values go up, but that's where it is now. And certainly just given, you know, this type of surplus, we thought it was, you know, appropriate to come before the board.
Yep.
Do we know that, have we had the, these firearms looked at, do we know their actual value? I don't remember what they, what they are. I think they were Glocks.
Yeah, I didn't get them, they're a couple of years old. I didn't have them appraised, I just, um, often on some of these things, when I estimate a value, like our tech items, I ask Chad, you know, what it is, and he'll go do research and give me a good faith effort. And I think that's what, uh, Mr. Hatcher did.
I believe we purchased them for five hundred. Okay, and so for the loss of a hundred dollars is not.
That's depreciated.
Yeah, it's depreciated.
Small enough that you're not actually doing that anyway, so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions or comments or conversation? All entertain a motion. I'll move to approve the surplus items as presented. Having a motion and a second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing then the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. Bus route thirteen. We received a, a concern from a parent regarding a change in the bus routing that had been
Her concern was that the, the new stop, because we had to collapse the routes, the new stop was on the opposite side of Diagonal, so her child had to cross Diagonal to get to the bus. She did call Jessica and Jessica worked with her. She also reached out to the board. And she, mom is actually taking her daughter to a, a different stop on that same route so that she feels better about where, where the stop is. And she understands why the stop is where it is, she just wanted to let us know that she, she was concerned about safety because people, and I think the speed limit at Diagonal right there is forty or fifty miles per hour.
Fifty, it's probably fifty.
But it, where the stop is, is within the legal requirements for a safe stop.
Okay.
A safe stop. So we were able to take care of her personal concern, but she, she is concerned in general about the stop.
This is kind of a, over here, but do we have any signs on Diagonal that show any school bus stopping, you might want to slow down?
Nope.
Is that our responsibility or do we need to reach out to ITV for that or?
That's probably Lakes, I would.
Yeah, okay. The Highway District.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, it's, it's not that it's new, but the fact that we're not able to, a school bus stop ahead sign or?
Yeah. Well, there's a lot of new development out there too.
Correct.
You know, and Diagonal has turned into like three-way access now.
Yeah, because they have both paths and.
Yeah, street shot. I know some of the other drivers, I didn't quite know what that referred to on that list that we approved. It said, because I remember I answered her and gave her that link, but it said, I didn't know how to interpret it when it, when it, there was a note on those bus routes to the driver, I assumed to, I didn't know if they were, how they were crossing the kids on the road, where they crossed other roads, like Old Ninety-Five.
Yeah, they put their arm out and the kids don't cross until the bus driver gives them the chance to cross.
Oh, that's what it is, okay. I didn't know if they were like getting off the bus or I didn't know what.
They can't, once the, can they, they can't get off the bus while the kids are on it, when it's open, right? They wouldn't get off the bus to.
There, no.
To motion kids across the street.
No, no, and, you know, we try to avoid, you know, either pickups or drops where they do have to cross, you know, any road really.
Right.
You know, and some of the, especially when you get some of the routes out there, it just almost, you can't do it everywhere. So, you know, the standard procedures, the bus stops, they have the stop sign out, they, the driver waits until seeing that a car, you know, if there is traffic coming, you know, from the opposite direction that whoever was there did stop and then the mere, someone else stopped, then they look, they wave with their arm, the students then cross and they know that, you know, traffic has been stopped by the front car. It's sort of that standard protocol. For example, my kids, when they had a pickup on Greens Ferry, you know, it was pretty quick, but that's where I was, that's, you know, I saw, that's how the bus drivers did every day. And, you know, my kids had to cross the road. They got dropped off on the right side one way, but on the other way, that's when it happened. So we do try to avoid that, but sometimes there's, yeah, there's no, there's no place to turn around, you know, that's a long stretch and.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing.
Yeah. But I definitely, you know, we hear that from parents on occasion, they, you know, I mean, it's true, especially in the winter, it gets a little tougher for sure.
Yeah, well, and I guess her issue was is that the route was changed. It for, you know, the bus had been stopping on the other side of the road for however.
Eleven years.
Yeah, years, eleven years, and then it was changed this year.
When they did the reroute.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I don't know what we can do about it now, but would be nice to ask about the signs and then I did notice that that note that was on the other routes was not on this route. So whatever that note refers to as far as the bus drivers crossing the kids, whatever that means, I would assume that it would apply to this, this stop also, just for safety But I think she has it resolved. I mean, I think that's all we can do. She did follow up with me afterwards, and you guys shared that email.
You did.
Yep, okay.
We are definitely in dire straits right now.
Yeah.
What's our starting wage for bus drivers?
Route seventeen.
Yeah, we, I think we actually moved that column at one point.
Yeah, I think we did that more recently, didn't we?
Yeah.
You know, like sixteen something, sixteen thirty-eight, I want to say.
I think it bumped up to around seventeen on top of my head.
I was just curious because I saw the coordinate system at eighteen thirty-five.
Uh, bus drivers seventeen forty. We're not that far off.
So it's not a dollar, but.
Ninety-five cents.
Okay. Any further discussion on bus route thirteen? Policy committee changes, policy committee would like to move policy committee meeting from Fridays to this, from every Friday, like, every Friday, to the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. And we just kind of wanted to make sure the board's okay with the committee just making that change because the members are two board members.
Yeah.
With the exception of.
Evelyn.
And Lynn. And Rosanna.
And Rosanna.
But, and whoever else may show up.
Yes, we might get people.
Yes. But I just didn't think it would be appropriate for us just to be saying what we're doing that we brought it to the board. Okay, so we're moving into Wednesdays.
I'm not going to overload you on the second Wednesday.
Well, if it's not overloading me every Friday, I can handle.
It's the first, first and, isn't it the first and third Wednesday because board meetings on the second Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what Bob was saying, is that it's all, it would be the same days.
It's not up to me.
He was trying to give me a little bit of something. It's still fine.
Yeah. First and third Wednesday. Thanks, Bob. First and third Wednesday, perfect. And then, wow, we get, we get a Wednesday.
Wow, good, so exciting.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
No.
Are we meeting this Friday or are we moving?
Well, depend on what we, I don't remember what was on the, if we had anything that was really like, you know, we, I don't remember what was on the last one. Thirty fifty, we're done with that, right?
We are, we send out to parents.
Okay.
We will, the next time we meet, whenever that is, we will be looking at all the survey results.
Okay.
And then making that final, you know, last ditch effort based on feedback. And then we'll look at the attendance letter and then we're moving to the train dogs.
Right. Okay, yuck. So I think we're fine knowing all that, that, I mean, I think we're fine to just move now and just do next Wednesday would be the third Wednesday. I mean, it's up to you, that would be.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, okay.
You good with it? You okay?
Perfect.
Well, because I don't know what time we're meeting, but.
Did we say five to seven?
Yeah, five to seven.
Yeah.
Okay. Five to seven in the evening. We'll try that approach. Mornings aren't working because.
Yeah. Well, and I think we had some interest from the parents or whoever.
Yeah, right, right.
I wondered about that.
Yeah, and other people that would be interested in, you know, and that would be great, so.
Yeah, and Rosanna will flex her time so that she's not.
Yeah.
Great, is that what you're doing?
Okay.
She's like, yeah. Moving on to the ten year, ten years of service plaque, Betty Kiefer Elementary.
Yes, I brought that up. So I was curious because when I went to the open house, there was a ten-year service plaque in there, but I didn't know what that, because it didn't say it was for Betty Kiefer, it just said Lakeland School District.
It was, it, that started a long time ago and when you were a ten, ten-year person in that school.
Oh, okay.
We put your name on the plaque.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, it was a really cool plaque, I was happy to see it there.
I would like to.
But I didn't know if it was.
Not every school.
Yeah, I thought it was just a nice idea.
Yeah, it is.
People recognized, you know?
Yes.
And that's why I was wondering, is that a district wide plaque or just there, but okay.
Just an awesome principal put that into effect.
Yeah, that was very nice.
And another awesome principal might have continued it.
I care, I think she did. We'll probably have another out because.
Amazing principal that's carrying the tradition.
I don't know. But I guess we bring it up so that if other schools would like to implement anything of that nature, they could. We'd like the idea. We'd like the idea.
Teachers being.
Well, even if it's not a plaque, even if you have like teacher of the month boards or something, I don't know, but just, that might be.
Crazy ideas.
Recognition is amazing, whatever you'd like to do. Discussing positions that require master's degrees.
So I would like to be able to enter into an MOU with the association for this year because our negotiated agreement states that a teacher is placed on our salary schedule based on the number of credits they earn after they, they earn their certification. So you get your certification and then you take additional credits, whether you're in a master's program or just continuing education credits, and you get to move across the salary schedule.
After you're hired.
After you're hired. We have three different groups of people who can't even work in a school district without their master's degree. And we're placing them on the BA plus zero, which is providing, yes, providing quite a little bit of a struggle for us. So that would be our school counselors, our school psychs, and our SLP, speech language pathologists. So what I would like to be able to do is enter into an MOU with the association to allow us to put them on the masters or the BA plus however many credits they got for their masters, to get them more in line with where everybody else is, gets to be when they get their masters, because teachers are not required to have a master's degree. So.
You'd probably want to have a whole bunch of discussion about that. No, I'm.
We've, we've been talking about it.
We deal with this quite frequently.
And it's really causing our federal programs director a lot of grief because we are struggling to fill those positions. And when we're starting to talk about pay and they're coming in with a master's degree and we can't honor the work that went into that.
Right.
And we're struggling.
Yeah, silly. I think it should be a non-issue question, but.
Right.
So are you talking about making corrective action at this point?
Well, what I would, what I would, what I would like to do is just enter into an MOU this year that says that for these three groups, we're going to agree that this is where we'll place them based on their credits. And then when we come back to IBB this next year, we'll fix it in the negotiated agreement. That's how we've handled it in the past when we've had a conflict with the.
So I think she's looking for.
Anyone who's in that position would get an appropriate change in salary.
Correct.
She's looking for direction from the board that, that we would be in agreement for her to do that.
And that, so Jason and I would work on that and then bring it to the next MOU for your approval.
So you'd have to prove it in the association as well, so.
We're just giving your guidance to go ahead and work on it.
You're going to get a payday before the next board.
We could, they could make up the difference.
Brooke's working with us on this.
You can deal with that, I think.
She's the master over there, I guess.
Brooke can fix anything.
Yeah, that is true. So we'll bring that MOU to the next.
Okay. Next is the letter to the county commissioner.
Yep. I was asked to send a letter to the county commissioner with the perspective from the school district rather than just signing off on the letter that went to the, from the city, cities, to the county commissioners, just talking about, just from the unique perspective of the school district. So I just wanted you to see what I sent.
We had all received the letter from the lawyer with respect to that. And so I told Lisa, because she's like, are you okay if we just sign off? And I said, I am, however, I think from our perspective at the school, we need to, to do our own thing. So, thank you for doing that.
Have the other school districts joined you in this in any way?
I'm not sure what the, the other school districts are definitely, there's a lot of talk about it. I'm just not sure if others wrote letters. I, did you, have you seen anything?
I don't know who else signed on with the, with the letter.
Initially, Megan O'Dowd, who was the attorney for several of the cities and school districts, recommended to the districts to let the cities do the heavy lifting.
I know both halls of department both signed on at the city level.
Okay.
And we did as well, correct? Or did we not?
No, I sent my own instead.
Okay, okay.
The only thing I wish we would have had in there was that unlike everybody else that does their budget, the dollars they're withholding from us were voted on by the taxpayers. It wasn't like a city council or commissioners decided with their department heads that this was the budget. You know, this is voter dollars that the voter said, we want this to go to the school. And Mr. Matheson said, oh, well, the way I read it, the school doesn't get, I mean, but he's usurping the voters' authority in the, in the whole thing. That was one little piece I see keeps missing in all of the, all of the articles and different things that I've read on it, but we'll see what happens with it. Thank you for doing the letter.
Yeah. Your letter is dated August twenty-eighth, any response of any more?
Oh, no, he's not responding to any now.
Can I send it directly to the county commissioners? Can I get any response to that? When's the next election?
Okay, for further discussion of the student dress code policy, we did just recently approve this. However, there's been a little, I guess, rigidity in interpretation. Could you please elaborate?
Yes. Elaborate. So there is the, there's a paragraph in there that says that the principal has the latitude to make temporary decisions about hat wearing based on learn, the learning environment. I don't remember the exact verbiage. So what, the questions that are coming up are definitely more at the secondary level. Kids have gotten very savvy and so during tests, they'll put AirPods in or, or AirPods to, and say they're listening to music. And then the teachers have found out that actually what they're listening to is a recording of the answers or of them reading the books. And so they, we have now have a policy where during tests, kids cannot have their, their AirPods in. But when they are able to wear a slacking cap, you can't necessarily see the ears. So the, the, the teachers just asked, could they say on test day that the hats come off while the kids are taking a test? The other issue that has come up is when, in speech, when students are doing speeches, there's an expectation that they're presenting in kind of a professional manner and that hats would be, would come off for those.
I believe any teacher has the ability and the authority to make the rules for their classroom. If they don't want hats in their classroom, then they say no hats in their classroom.
I think we were trying to not go down that road because, because. I think we were trying to not go down that road, because, because it, it was, it's hard for kids where one teacher lets me wear a hat, and one teacher doesn't let me wear a hat. So we were trying to kinda take some of that out of there. But the principal definitely has the latitude based on, as far as the way I'm reading it, the language in there that says, they can set those standards. So during presentations, no hats, during tests, no hats. So I just, what I wanted to know from the board was, am I reading that language correctly and interpreting that correctly, so that we're actually implementing the policy in the way that you were intending for it to be implemented?
Well, it is specific in the sense that it says, in order to allow appropriate attire for a particular educational or school activity or event, the building principal has the authority to grant temporary exceptions to specific provisions of this policy. And I would say educational activity would be a class, and that they can, you know, if the principal, principals know their culture within their school, if they know they have that type of a problem, then they can just tell the staff, no hats during test days, or no hats when, when it's not deemed appropriate.
Right.
Such as presentations or whatever, in speech.
Pledge of allegiance.
Which is actually USC code, pledge of allegiance.
I think that was specifically called.
That was, yeah, because we wanted to make sure that that was.
Pledge of allegiance to the National Anthem and Veterans Day Assembly.
Yes.
And so I think likewise, the other thing that, the other question that came up, so in our strength and conditioning classes, they actually, when they're working on the feet and strengthening their feet, which apparently is a thing, and they actually do, they, they have the kids take their shoes off for that, and the policy specifically says that kids have to have shoes on. We also have plays where part of the costume is that they're in bare feet. And so again, I think that falls under that same.
Okay, well, the word choice is should, it's not shall.
I know, I know.
So they should be worn, but if something comes up where it's not appropriate or convenient for whatever is going on at that time, they take the shoes off, I mean.
I just, I, that's how I was reading it, but I, I, it was suggested that I just clarify with the board, so I am, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
And those were all put in.
I have clarification.
And all those were put in there based upon the conversations that we had in policy committee with parents.
Parents.
And the administration team that was there. And it does say, if a conflict arises, the interpretation of the building principal shall be final.
Perfect.
I like that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, but with, with the exception of these exceptions, this staff is perfectly fine with the kids wearing hats, and the kids are so happy that they get to wear hats to sleep, so.
Good. District reading skills plan.
Lynn and I have been working on this. So with the, the new dyslexia laws that are in place.
Right.
There are some requirements that we have for universal screeners and diagnostic assessments to be used on kids who identify as a tier two or tier three student in the area of reading. And so Lynn and I just put together this plan as a draft, it has to be submitted to the state by November first. So we are continuing, right now, we're struggling with, because we are not using iReady Reading, and the diagnostic, we are working really hard to find a diagnostic tool that we can use that will measure comprehension. We think we might have found one today, so we reached out and we're waiting to hear, and that will have to come through the supplemental curriculum committee for approval. But we need, that kinda needs to be fast-tracked, because we have to be able to supply this information to the state by November first.
Okay.
We're working frantically.
Okay.
But we just wanted you to be aware that we're on it, as far as getting it done. Is there anything you wanna add to that, Lynn?
I appreciate the detail on the layout.
Yeah, it's great. Good job, Lynn. Can't we just send them a coming soon, like the weapon change?
Under construction.
No, it just literally says, coming soon.
Yeah, on the state department. It's passed, school's in session, and still, it's on its way. It's okay.
Okay. Um, next is the land exchange with Cordillane School District. I have my own thoughts on this. But apparently, the state board of, well, were you in the board when we did this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No.
Bob, I know wasn't, and David wasn't. But in my opinion, I felt we were strong-armed into making this land swap. We traded land with Cordillane to make, it made sense, but we lost a lot of acreage that were supposed to be increasing in tax dollar base, because it was going to be more, we would have more structures on it than the land that we swapped, which was gonna have more apartment buildings on it, apparently, that were gonna be, there was gonna be high-density business, whatever. But my frustration was, we were losing so much land in this swap.
We lost a lot of, no, land, a lot of value, dollar value.
Correct, and we weren't compensated in any way, shape, or form for that transaction.
Right.
We, the board was told at that time that if we didn't approve it, Cordillane could just take it.
Oh, no.
And they've done that to us before. Correct, yeah. And then we were told that if we make the agreement, then we don't have to put it to a vote, to the, to the public. The public doesn't have to vote on it. Well, it appears that the state board of education is now saying, we want it to go to a vote. Why, I don't know, but it appears that they would like to have us in agreement with having Megan O'Dowd push back and say, we don't need to have this go to a vote, the board's agreed, case or as or. So, I don't know, I'm a little annoyed by, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm a, you made a deal, you know, and when you make a deal with somebody, when you shake their hand and put it in formal writing, it's a deal, you live by whatever you agreed to.
Correct.
I think we got a bad deal out of it, honestly.
Thank you.
A very bad deal, but nevertheless, that's the deal.
Correct.
So just do it and move on, whatever it takes, I guess.
Water under the brake track.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll ask Megan O'Dowd.
Well.
Are we, yeah, have Megan push that we've.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to spend a ton more time on it.
No.
We, I feel like we dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and we did our due diligence with it.
We did.
Regardless of whether it was a good choice or a bad choice.
Well, and I don't, whether we.
We have options of doing it under one or the other code, so.
Well, the frustration.
Why are they saying that we have to do it under, no, we submitted it under this code, either approve it or don't.
Right, but, I mean, now that we, the intent, the, the perception is that we've made the swap, but now they have a builder that wants to take a little section out of that land that we just swapped and put it back in Cordillane. So it's, it's gonna be this ongoing push-pull tug battle, that's just like.
Go back to what I just said, you made a deal, you stick around the deal.
Yeah, right.
If you're gonna renege on it, then the whole thing falls apart.
Right.
That's the problem with dealing with that particular neighbor.
The least will be always.
Good fences make good neighbors. Apparently, we don't have a good fence in either of those places.
All right, well, that concludes the discussion portion of the agenda. Yay. Do we have any input for future agenda items? No? Okay.
We, we have received two bids for the mini school buses for.
Oh, yay.
Yes.
But does that mean that we would get them soon?
Are they?
Are they? Are they in stock?
I asked that question, they are not in stock. But it, once we get the P O out, then as soon as they get them, we get them.
Okay.
And the board approved the expenditure of that, but we do have two bids, so I didn't, if we're going to have a special meeting, I would like to bring those bids to the board.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Okay. I don't wanna wait till the October board meeting.
Gotcha. All right, well, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to enter back into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B. So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, I need a roll call vote.
Vice President?
Yes.
Trustee Dean?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
With that, we are in executive session, and you have all got to move. Except you, you know.
We have dinner, would you like dinner?
Okay, so we've come out of executive session, there are no action items necessary. That being said, meeting adjourned. It's ten oh eight.
I can one all.
Thank you, thank you.
That actually wasn't too bad, we're to executive session.